Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 4th Select Board Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. Jay, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under thy, indivisible, veritable, and just as well.
Good evening, everybody. We have a lot of people here tonight. We're here to give honor to Jay Barrows for being our state rep for as long as he was. Much appreciated. I figured as the chair, I could say a few words, but I know that Doc is very close with you, and I thought I would pass the baton to Doc, and he said he would be honored to take it, so I'm gonna let you.
Thank you.
You got it.
Well, here we go again. Thank you very much.
Let me get a front row seat.
Thank you. For taking time out of your very busy schedule. Oh, wait a minute, you were tired now. Good for you. This is awesome. We've certainly worked with each other quite well over the last nine years, and working probably myself with anywhere between 12, 14 board members. I don't think I ever heard a negative thing said about you and all the different chairmans that have been up here. It's been just so easy to work with you over the years. The first time I spoke to you, I told you the story real quick, a couple of weeks ago, I was having problems with my insurance company personally, Havert Pilgrim, and they had changed their fiscal year. And in three months, I got hit with two different deductibles, and I'm like, "Past." So I'm like, "What better person to call than our state rep who happens to be in insurance?" So I gave the office a call, and the person who answered the phone took down the information. I'm like, "Yeah, sometime in the next week or two, I might hear back from the gentleman." And eight o'clock at night, I get a phone call, and it's from you. Eight o'clock at night? He's returning free of phone calls. And although I didn't like his answer, there was nothing he could do, or they could do whatever they wanted, I was impressed, you know? That sort of balanced the negativity of the answer. And then to be able to, over the years, during Chamber of Commerce-type meetings, it was the first time I met you in person, and then being on the board. We've all heard this, you know, about him, you know, in the numerous goodbye functions that you've had. I think what impressed me the most, not only is he accessible, but his working relationship with everybody. It didn't matter who it was. I saw him at Boy Scout Eagle presentations, and you were always there. You were just always there. And I think us as Foxborough, you think you've got half of Mansfield, you've got half of Norton, but you've got all of us, and you're always here for us. And, you know, just to say one other quick thing, I don't want to drag them on too long, but his relationship with Paul on the other side of the aisle, I mean, did not matter what the issue was. We all came together for what was best for your three communities, Paul's 12?
Seven.
Seven communities. What was best for our communities, and you guys just always worked so great together. And it didn't matter where it was, whether it was the issues we were having with the trains back in the day, you know, blocking streets, or, you know, Patriot or Craft-type issues. It was just great sitting back and watching you work. And sad to see you go, happy to see you go, you know, happy that you're retiring, happy that I heard somewhere that this might be the last one, that you can really truly retire. But from the board, from my heart, it was a pleasure. It was great working with you all throughout these years.
Appreciate it. It was fun.
Absolutely. I just want to add one little thing. The first time you were running, and I know you talked to so many people like back then, but you walked some of the Summerfield community, and, you know, you came and knocked on our door, and we were always a split house. You know, we were both independent. Jimmy leaned Republican, I leaned Democratic, and you left, and we were both like, "He's got our vote," you know? You know, like Doc said, you know, you just, from the get-go, we always had a good feeling about you, and very appreciative of everything you've done, done all these years, not only our town, you know, the other towns you represent as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
And Jay, you know, obviously, we've worked together for 14 years, and it was always great, to Doc's point, where you could make a phone call, and you'd answer, and we have a few laughs, but we'd get to the point that we needed to get to. So I think the town has really benefited from you in this position, and I really appreciate it.
I appreciate that from you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Jay, Dennis? I don't even know when we met or how we met. I think it just happened.
Just happened.
And you've been a friend to me, you've been a friend to Recreation when I worked on Recreation, obviously a friend to the town. It's a great loss, but it's a great personal gain for you and your life, and I appreciate you, and I wish you the best.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Jay, we've only known each other a short time, maybe, I think, eight years. I kind of blended into your office for insurance at one point, and got insured, but I spent a lot of time at the State House in my prior positions, as you know, with the House and the Senate, and really saw how things operated, and got to know a lot of your colleagues, and we can share a beer and probably have some great war stories that we could share. But I was really impressed with you coming to Foxborough, so accessible as a local rep, you know, everybody really, first-name basis, and really respected you, and you could see that you were serving the population well. And in this day and age, the relationship you had with Senator Feeney and the two of you working together, I didn't know who was Republican, who was Democrat, quite frankly. Took me a couple of years before I figured it out. But it's obvious you've been a tremendous asset. I've enjoyed working with you. You do a great job, and people really love you, as best I can determine, so congratulations going into your retirement. Does your family know you're retiring?
They're waiting still.
Because when I retired, and I was home, that was a shock to everybody. They had to adjust to me being home, so.
Right, right.
A word to the wise.
Yeah, exactly. We'll see what happens.
Yeah.
See what happens, exactly.
We do have Senator Feeney here.
Tokens of our gratitude.
Oh, wow. Something to wear?
We're gonna hook you where it's appropriate.
It's controversial.
Oh, that's perfect. Well, yeah, when I put it on, my grandson in Foxborough loves it. Exactly, go into Mansfield, win their football or basketball or whatever. Beautiful. I will wear proudly, you know where I am. Thank you.
There was a lot of discussion about that. We all knew, but he'll get it on. Here's a little something for you and your wife to celebrate your retirement.
Awesome, thank you. Beautiful.
Can we take a picture with everybody?
Sure, although I think Senator Feeney has something to say. We want to do a little more, and we have some representatives from the FCBC here as well, and everybody just wants to continue to love on Jay. How do you not love him? Except he's leaving.
Where'd you go?
There you go.
What's up, buddy? I wasn't sure which way to go tonight, Madam Chair, members of the board. We had his retirement party a couple of months ago, and it was a little bit more of a roast. So I said, "Tonight, we'll take it easy on him." But I appreciate, Madam Chair, members of the board, the opportunity to say a few words about my friend and colleague. First off, as a constituent here in Foxborough, I get to know Representative Barrows, well, years, I mean, probably 18 years ago, 19 years ago. And I reached out to him on a couple of issues, and like you, Doc, I didn't like the answer that I got, but the fact that he was so available and accessible meant something to me, and as I served on this board and got to know Jay and the way that he served his district and our community, I was blown away, and I remember thinking, you know, this is the way the government should work, even if we don't agree, and we're working through some challenging times here in Foxborough when I was on this board. But Jay was always there, and he would always have the candid conversation, and that never stopped. Having the opportunity to work with Jay over the last seven and a half-plus years, myself in the Senate, him in the House, I get to know him even more, and we forged a friendship. We forged a friendship because I saw in Jay exactly what public servants should be and how they should serve. This isn't to say that we didn't, you know, we didn't disagree. We disagreed on a lot of kind of the big political issues of the day, different parties and kind of a different frame of reference. And oftentimes, we'd get into some pretty heated debates over the phone. He would try and convince me that I was wrong, and I would try and convince him that he was wrong. Neither of us ever succeeded in convincing each other, and my guess is that he probably hung up the phone and rolled his eyes, because I did. But as we look around the political world today, there was never any judgment there, and that was the difference with Jay and who he is. I never, I never thought that there was some sort of ulterior motive or other agenda other than he was working to get it right for the people that he represented in Foxborough, in Mansfield, in Norton. We need more people that serve like that these days. You know, we could disagree on some of the bigger political issues, but every single time I talked to Representative Barrows, it was about, "Hey, can we just get it right?" He spent his entire day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, just trying to get it right. And unlike a lot of modern-day public servants and elected officials, it didn't matter if it was his idea, if it was my idea, if it was somebody else's idea, there was no pride of ownership or authorship, it was not about credit. Jay truly served as somebody who just wanted to get it right for the people that he represented. And again, that is rare these days. Even if it meant taking the path of most resistance for Jay, right? If it meant there was going to be another 20 phone calls, if it meant he was going to have to, you know, tick somebody off in the administration, right? If it meant that he was going to have to, you know, take another Saturday, Sunday meeting, he did it if it was going to advance the cause here in Foxborough, in Mansfield, in Norton. I would frequently get on the phone with Jay, and it always, he has this line, and you all know him, you talk to him, and it's say, "Just explain this to me, right? Just explain this to me. Explain this to me like I'm dumb. Why are we doing this?" And it all boiled down to just, "Hey, can we just have some common sense in what we're trying to do, and I'm gonna miss him for that, I'm gonna miss him for his friendship." I leaned on Jay a lot in learning this job and learning how to be a public servant. I would call on him frequently to say, "You know, what do you think about this? How do we do this? How do we do that? And I'm gonna miss that, but I really, really appreciate that." I know, speaking on behalf of all our constituents that we served together, Jay, that you're gonna be missed. I know, you know, we were in a meeting with Paige not too long ago, and this is one of the things I always said about Jay, is he was like the sixth Select Board member for all the towns he represented. He knew everything that was going on in the towns, but it's because of his availability, accessibility, and meeting with our town manager here in Foxborough and then in Mansfield and Norton on a regular basis. So we've all gotten to know him. We were sitting with Paige and continuing that tradition with Representative Chason, having a conversation with Paige, and she said, "We want to recognize Jay at a future meeting, and we're trying to figure out what we're gonna do for him. What do you think if we got him a vest? Does he wear vests?" And Rep. Chason says, "Oh, that guy wears a lot of vests." So...
You have a reputation.
Yeah. And so if I see Chason starting to wear vests, or Barrows Insurance buttoned down, I know the transformation is complete. But just if I could just end with this, and I know, you know, so many of us in the district that know Jay and appreciate his service, I will tell you that being in that legislature for so many years now, and it was set up on this table, there's not a person that says a negative thing about Jay, a bad thing about Jay. And when you talk about Jay Barrows in the legislature, that is true. In the minority party, which is not, not easy sometimes, I know, I've been told anyways, but, you know, not easy, frequently butting heads with others that we serve with, but he always did it in a respectful way, and I say that from the bottom of my heart. That is not cliche. We're not just, you know, going through the list of retirement, you know, check-the-box things to say. Jay really did serve in a dignified, respectful way, and he has earned the reputation of being such a public servant, a great public servant here in the district and in the State House. So with that, I am certainly gonna miss him. I told him this privately, I told him this at his retirement party. I really did enjoy working with you over the years, Jay. I know that our district is better off because of it, the town of Foxborough, the gem of Norfolk County is better off because of your service for 18 years. But I will say, Madam Chair, that having the opportunity to serve with Jay for so many years and being in the district from Eagle Scout Courts of Honor and Chamber of Commerce events, and, you know, we've had the occasion to give a lot of congratulatory citations for people that step up in our community. And every time I gave one from the Senate, I would see Barrows looking over like with envy of a Senate citation. He had the House one, which is good, but the Senate citation, he would always like peer at it. So with that being said, I am honored to present Representative Barrows with, is this your first Senate citation you've ever received?
Yes, it is. Ooh! That's awesome.
This is big. I won't give him my PIN, because I'm scared it'll run against me in two years, but if I, if I can offer this to you, Representative, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Senate, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Representative F.J. Barrows in recognition of your 18 years of dedicated public service as a state representative for the first Bristol District and your unwavering commitment to your constituents. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success and enjoyable retirement, that this citation be duly signed by the President and the Senate and attested to and a copy there transmitted by the clerk. It is signed by our Senate President, Karen E. Spilka, and it is offered by your friend, a grateful state senator, Paul Arfini. Jay, I'm gonna miss you. Congratulations and thanks for all you've done. Representative Chason?
Yes, sir. Well, I mean, I don't know how much more can be said about Jay after listening to everybody here, and Paul is probably one of the best public speakers that I've ever had to follow or go before. But one thing I can say from personal note is a thank you, and I couldn't have asked for a better mentor, or just somebody to look up to and somebody to show me the ropes. I know Paul said that he leaned on him a lot when he was learning the job. I lean on Jay just as much. I talk to Jay pretty regularly, told him he can't go anywhere for a long time, and he better not lose my number, so. But that being said, actually, first one I'm doing, so bear with me. Look at that. So a citation from the House Representatives, Massachusetts House of Representatives. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Jay Barrows in recognition of your 18 years of service as an exceptional state representative for the first Bristol District and your dedication to the community of Foxborough. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for good, for good future, good fortune, hope for future good fortune and continued success in all of your endeavors. Given this fourth day of February 2025, signed by Speaker of the House, Ron Mariano, and yours truly, State Representative Michael Chason.
Thank you. Well, can I just say, and this is, I promise this is it.
Please.
I really appreciate the honor to be bestowed upon me tonight. I know it's been, I announced my retirement back in April, I think, of last year. Takes a long time to retire. Like a bad penny, it just won't go away. But, and thank you, folks, for coming out from our Foxborough Business Collaborative. Great group of people, really energized. Amy's been helping us each month to gather, and Liz and Kara, my daughter Caitlin, a great, great group, and we've really made a difference in downtown Foxborough. It's alive and it's well. And the collaboration working with Paige and her leadership team for those things to come together, it's really something that we're all so proud of, you know? Cindy Hadad Drew, her work, the rec department, you know, everybody's working together, and that's what's so impressive. And our town is second to none. I mean, I used to see the comparisons, "Oh, Mansfield, oh, Mansfield," and I can wear my Warrior Vest downtown Mansfield and say, "See, we're doing it too." So congratulations on all the work that you do. I know it's a volunteer position, it's not easy always landing on the right decision, but through consensus and keep pushing, you get there, and you've all done a great job. And I've been impressed with our still-new town manager, Paige has done a great job in holding it all together, and the advancements that you've made, you know, drive up 140, and I look at the housing project. I mean, that's unbelievable that that's happening. It's the largest in New England, and it's a public-private partnership, and you don't get that, you know? The sewer being expanded, I had to throw sewer in, but you don't get that, you know? And the work that we've done with some other things, just amazing. So it's really been great, and it's great to see the communities come together, the three that I represented and others, all working in the same direction, and that thanks goes to Senator Feeney and his efforts to bring everybody together as well. So congratulations to all you've done. I'm gonna keep reading the newspaper, and I'm gonna be around, so, you know, I know things come up and sometimes need a little institutional knowledge. Happy to share what I will remember, some of it, I probably won't, but it's been a great run, and really have appreciated the folks in Foxborough. The last piece I'll say is I'm glad that we have not changed the district. It has remained the same, and it will so for 30 years. So it's not one of these slice this chunk off and take that leg off and add an arm. It stayed the same, and to see the three communities do things together has been remarkable, and that will always be maintained through the leadership. So thanks for what you do, and we'll see ya. I promise I won't be back to look for any more citations. Thank you, too, for these, they're very special, and to get one as opposed to give one, it's really, it's really awesome. So thanks again, I appreciate it.
Paige, did you have anything you wanted to say, or did we hit everything, or anybody?
I think we, we're good. He knows how I feel about him. He's just the bee's knees.
Yeah, we definitely would love to grab a photo, though.
Yeah, let's get a picture. One more thing I can get somebody to post on Facebook.
Jay, you should be under the seal, it's gonna drive me crazy. Just scoot that way a little bit. Whatever you want. Steph and Jay, switch places. Okay, that's much better. Okay, all together like you like each other. Dennis, go that way a little bit. Okay, that's good. Got it.
All right, I'll see you guys. And I do love my best. Thank you.
Okay. Put your order in. Just put your order in. Do we have anybody here for citizens' input? Anybody online, Katie?
Not online, no.
Okay, awesome. Okay, did one open up the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The Select Board will hold a public...
Do we have to say what it is?
Yeah, she's about to say it.
The Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, beginning at 7:05 PM in the Gayla Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 140, Section 157, and Chapter 78 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough to address a complaint filed with the Board relative to an alleged nuisance and/or dangerous dog resulting from an incident that occurred on January 4th, 2025, involving Enzo, a lab-type dog owner Samantha Pa.
Casey?
So on January 4th, 2025, there was an incident that occurred on Farrington Street, which involved two dogs, Enzo and another dog, Finley, which is owned by a neighbor. And Finley was in the yard of their owner when Enzo approached their dog and attacked him. According to Finley's owner, there was no obvious warning from Enzo prior to the attack There were punctures on Finley's leg that required veterinary care. According to Enzo's owner, he had slipped out of the house while they were bringing groceries, and him and Finley got into it. Enzo also received a bite from Finley as well during the altercation. So both dogs were quarantined. There was concerns of the owner of Finley as far as the safety of Enzo, given this is the third incident that she knew of, where Enzo had attacked another dog in the neighborhood. The first incident occurred January of 2023, similar incident. A dog was in its yard, it was a large German Shepherd, it was with the owner. Enzo had slipped out, went over, and attacked the German Shepherd. There was no obvious signs prior to the attack, he just went into it, caused injury to that dog, which also required veterinary care. And then there was an incident back in August. Another neighbor was walking his Golden Retriever through the neighborhood, his Golden slipped off leash. Enzo was on leash, but when the Golden approached Enzo, Enzo did attack him and caused a puncture to him as well, requiring vet care at that time. So this is his third incident at this point. So the owner of Enzo did pay for the vet bills for Finley's injuries from this past incident, though. So just so we have that. I believe you guys got emails from several of the neighbors regarding the incident. So I have my recommendations. I think at this point, it's safe to say that he could be considered a dangerous dog by the state. And I do recommend that he be confined to the property at all times, that he wear a muzzle and be leashed at all times when off property, and that the homeowners carry an insurance policy of at least $100,000, just in the event that another incident were to occur.
Steph?
Yeah.
We did get one letter from a neighbor that we should probably read into the record.
Yeah, absolutely. And unfortunately, everything we have here is sideways.
Yeah.
So we're all trying to, everything is sideways.
But you have a, someone else wants to read it?
Absolutely. You have it in front of you, would you mind?
No, not at all.
Thank you so much.
So this was an email that we did get from a neighbor, and we're gonna read that into the record. "Hi, Casey. Sure, I would be happy to share information from my perspective. My husband John and I live at 2 Farrington Street. We have lived here for 15 years and have two kids, ages 10 and 8. We also have a 1.5-year-old Australian Labradoodle, 20 pounds. We have a very close-knit street. There are about 16 kids and 10 dogs on the street. We have great neighbors, which is the main reason why we love living here so much. John and I both work at home full-time, and we live on the corner lot on Farrington adjacent to Torrey Street. We often see a lot of the action on the street, people walking, kids playing, delivery drivers, et cetera. Those that have dogs, we see daily, sometimes multiple times a day, as the yards are not fenced in, though some of the dogs have electric fences. Regarding the dog Enzo, I only see him being walked a few times a year. I've heard of three separate incidents regarding Enzo. On one of the incidents, Bill was walking by my house, and we took his dog Bo for a walk with my dog Sandy. Bill was very shaken and upset as Bo had just been attacked by Enzo at his mailbox. As we continued to walk around the neighborhood, we noticed red blood on Bo's neck. He was punctured. Bo was a very sweet and gentle dog who plays with my dog very nicely. The other incident between Drogo and Finley, we were not there to witness but heard about it through our neighbors. They both sounded horrible. Drogo is a large German Shepherd, extremely well-trained, highly obedient dog. Finley is a sweet, happy, energetic dog who likes walks with her family. The only run-in with Enzo that we had was when my husband and I went out for the evening in the fall of 2024 timeframe. My kids were at home being watched by our grandparents, by the grandparents. Sandy has an electric fence, she is very well-trained on the fence and is not tempted to go in the street. However, the night we were out, Enzo was being walked by his owner, and for whatever reason, maybe Sandy sensed danger, she did cross the electric fence and went towards Enzo. The owner told my son to get our dog back, and thankfully, she was not injured in the interaction." she was not injured in the interaction. Because of Enzo's unpredictable behavior, we avoid walking our dog at that end of the circle and caution our kids when playing at that end of the street where Enzo lives. The Sweeney family who have Finley, who have Finley have two small children, one is, one who is an infant. If it were me, I would be scared to walk outside my house, to go to my mailbox with my kids out of safety. Enzo has attacked three dogs and could attack the child. I hope this helps you as you evaluate the situation. Thanks, Pam."
Thank you, Doc. All right. So obviously, we've heard from Casey. I guess out of fairness, I would ask Enzo's owners, Sam, if you'd like to come up and, you know, give us fairness, your side, what happened.
This is my husband, Rob.
Yeah.
Hi, Rob.
How are you doing, everyone? First of all, thank you very much for letting us speak. I will say that obviously, we are very sorry towards Finley and Finley's parents. Even that night, the first thing we did, obviously, when Enzo came back into the house, is we rushed over there and let them know, let us, let us know what the vet bill is. We'll pay the vet bill. We obviously know that it's a traumatic incident. I mean, even when my dog has been bitten on a walk, obviously, I get a little shaken up, too. I mean, it happens. The one thing that I'll say from hearing everything that I've heard tonight is it's not all apples and apples. I will say that night, we were taking groceries into the house. Enzo did, you know, slip out as, obviously, there's no picture of him. He's a black dog. It was around 8, 9 o'clock at night. Obviously, blends in, and the first we heard of is him running to the other, to the other dogs. As we got over there, I didn't even have to pull Enzo off the other dog. Obviously, he sensed what was going on. We got him back into the house. Obviously, like I said, we told him, we'll pay for the vet bills. We did pay for the vet bills. The second incident that was occurred is I was walking my dog. I was, as I kind of always do, they say, I've only walked it a few times. I try to walk it almost every day. But I was walking my dog in the middle of the street, and another dog, whether it was leashed or unleashed, ran into the street and attacked my dog. Did he, did my dog bite him back? Yeah, he did. But just like I think anyone would do, it's self-defense. If someone comes attacks you, that's what happens. The third incident, like I said, was in 2003, as I listed off. My neighbor, who we share a yard with, outside with their dog. Obviously, my dog was outside with my wife as well, where obviously, there was an altercation. Again, our two yards are joint. I just, every situation is a little bit different, and I get it, people want to be protected. But even when we talked about the letter, the person that wrote that letter wasn't there in that situation. I was. Again, I am in my, you know, element, walking my dog, as I always do. This dog, who is, you know, running in their yard, runs into the street, but yet it's somehow our fault that they're scared and dangerous of our dog. I've had two incidents out of these four, where a dog has come after our dog, but it's making it out to be seen like our dog is the problem or the nuisance. Our dog is a very happy-go-lucky dog. I get it that there was two incidents, the Finley incident and the one with our other neighbor. But again, dogs sometimes wrestle, and dogs sometimes, you know, take a little too far. It's happened. I have people here tonight that will tell you that there's about six dogs that Enzo sees on a weekly, monthly, daily basis, that he's never had a single altercation with. I've taken our dog on multiple walks that they've never had a single incident with. Now, I get it, I would be a little weary, too, but dogs are dogs. And again, we talk about three incidents or four incidences. There was only two incidents ever really called in because granted, two incidents were ever really something to be actually talked about. And one of those incidences is another dog came out of his house, driveway, wherever, and bit my dog. Now, I'm not, now I'm not saying if, you know, if we're gonna hold my dog accountable for someone else's dog coming and biting them, and he's attacked, he's, you know, defending himself, then are we holding Finley accountable because my dog came over and, you know, bit him, and he, you know, protected himself? Dogs are dogs. They're not humans that can't use their words. Do they take it a little too far sometimes? Yes.
I think, too, that each incident is completely different. We were immediately apologetic. We went over, we offered to pay the bill, you know, apologized profusely. With the earlier incident in 2023, our, like my husband said, our yard's a butt. Both dogs were off-leash at the time. We never keep our dog off-leash otherwise. We walk him on a leash. We keep him in our backyard, which is mostly fenced in. We are in the process of fencing in the remainder of the yard, so that's already, you know, being taken care of. You know, when we walk him, we are, we're not approaching other dogs that we don't know, where, you know, the, the idea that, that him on walks is he's a dangerous dog. We have, to look at, to lump all these incidents together, just doesn't seem accurate because each one had nuances that were not, that are not all the same.
And again, just to, to, to travel one other point, I understand that people say, oh, let's muzzle the dog, and that fixes the problem. We've been working with Enzo. I will say, me and my wife did some-
We've had a trainer, yep.
We've had some great work with Enzo. I will say, with her being home for almost a year and a half of COVID, and I know that's somewhere past, some of that regressed. But again, out of our four incidencies, even though there's only two on record, that means if I had a muzzle on my dog for two of those incidences, that two other dogs that ran into the street after my dog would have been able to bite my dog multiple times, and my dog do nothing about it. Now, I'm not saying, you know, one for one, but again, two dogs ran into the street from their house and went after my dog.
It's just difficult to hear that our dog attacked a dog when we were on a walk. An unleashed dog came up to us, approached us, and respond, and he responded. So it's a little bit, they're all just very different situations. Like I said, the 2023, both dogs were off-leash in the front yards. They met, you know, at our properties, and there was no report filed then. We were not given a vet bill to pay, which we would have if-
I even went over there that night and talked to the owner. And again, you know, I don't know if it's, like I said, dogs are different. Dogs are different than humans. But like you said, I don't know if my dog was trying to go over and play or something, but that dog, while it is very well-trained, is off-leash 24/7 in the neighborhood. And obviously, my dog went out there and had an altercation with them, but nothing came of that. We never heard a single word of that until-
And in both situations, we, no one had to pull our dog off. You know, he came back right away. They sort of met, tussled, came back. And, you know, if, if we're kind of going in the direction of, well, your dog, even though you were walking your dog and another dog approached, then the same could go for Finley. You know, you were walking your dog, and our dog approached, and you still bit our dog. So it's a little bit, it just gets a little complicated with that. We were at fault, but the second dog that was walking, when we were on a walk and was unleashed, they were at fault. So it's just, they're all very different, and, and we do not consider, like, we wouldn't have a dangerous dog in our home. We have nieces and nephews that he's with constantly.
I take care of three kids under 10 years old, and I can't tell you how much that, when they go home, they talk about missing our dog. I mean, trust me, I get it, that other dog owners, they have kids. Oh, well, I'm scared for my child. I get that.
There's been no issues with people. There's been no issues with kids. There's, it's just been three very different accidents, and we've made sure, moving forward, like, we're vigilant about shutting the doors when we-
We had someone come over and fix our door. I mean, it's-
We've just, we, we took responsibility. We're, you know, we are caring for our neighbors. We're not, you know, this isn't a situation where we don't care. If we didn't care, we wouldn't be here right now, kind of laying it all out here, so.
Any questions? Absolutely. I just, I want to add a couple of, couple of things, and some of the people are here, so I feel comfortable saying what I'm gonna say because, so as I was reading a lot of this, I don't, I don't know Enzo. I don't know the German Shepherd. I don't know the people who own it, but I will say, this might be an opportunity. So I serve on the Summerfield Board as well, and I have, your dog is very well-behaved. I see you walking with him, but he's off-leash. And we have our own bylaws in there, and so, you know, I just want to, maybe this is an opportunity just to say, where there are incidents happening in that neighborhood with, with other dogs. I've had two people complain to me about your dog, that you're riding a bike. I've, I've seen you. Now, we're kind of, we're self-policing. My answer to them was, if you have an issue, you need to call the management company, and they will deal with it. I, I'm not gonna call the management company, you know. So, but just that I hear that your dog was involved in this. I'm not, I'm not saying any fault. I'm just saying, you know, we have a lot of dogs, you know. And again, you know, Bill's here. I know Bill because we served on the board together. Bill, I heard somebody say that you told them that you were at fault, that your dog, you lost control of your dog, and your dog ran up. So you're here. Otherwise, I wouldn't say that, because I feel like you-
I'd like to comment.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So we, we have a lot of dogs in Summerfield. And, you know, I think, well, we will let everybody else, you know, say, and is Finley's owner here, too? Okay, perfect. And so, and then, of course, we'll circle back around, because Casey is the expert, so. Okay, anything else you guys-
We do have Jay on, we have Jay here, just in case you have any legal questions or any-
Perfect. Like I said, I, I know the area. I know, you know, I know some of the people. I most certainly wouldn't make a comment without somebody being able to defend themselves. But, you know, that we have, we have a lot of, a lot of people who, who walk their, bring their dogs. I'm not saying you were, were on leash. What I was told was you lost control of your dog, and he, and he ran up to them. That's, that's what I heard. But I, I think it's, you know, and it might be something we will bring up as a community also, because it's, you know, there's so many dogs in there, and a lot of people feel like they have control of their dog. And you don't always. So we'll, we can address that as our community as well. So hopefully, you're not getting, you're not getting calls for Summerfield. But absolutely. Anything else you guys want to add, or does anybody have any questions?
Again, I just, I mean, even to them, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry that our dog bit their dog. I mean, I, I will say that we have taken steps every single which way, whether it's, you know, the dog coming up to us, or our dog, we've taken ways to, to, to make it right. And like I said, that's why we wanted to make sure that, you know, that day, or actually, you know, the next day when we talked, I made sure we paid the vet bill, you know. I gave a check that night, you know. We definitely are sorry, and we are working to, to make sure it doesn't happen again. But again, I, I think when you hear all the incidents and lay out all the facts, they're all extremely different. And again, I, I don't know where putting a muzzle on my dog while he's on leash would have prevented any of that, especially when two of the dogs came up to him when we were on a walk. But that's all I can do.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have any questions?
For Casey, you got this report in January of this incident. Did any of the other incidences result in a written report to you, a complaint to you? Or was it just the one written complaint, and then everybody sent their letters afterwards?
So the one in August was a notice that I received from the vet for a bite, and that was a quarantine that was issued then, and everything was taken care of then.
But the, the parents didn't complain? The, the dog owners didn't complain? The vet told you?
Nope. The dog, I spoke with the dog owners as well, so I got the report from them.
They didn't reach out to you first and file a report?
So normally, what happens is whenever there is a domestic bite to another animal, either the vet has to, like, the vet usually sends me an email pretty immediately, and then I reach out. He may have called me. If it's a weekend, sometimes the owners will call before I get back in on a Monday to call them back. But usually, that vet report comes like when they're sitting in the office still. So if, if the incident happens and they leave and go straight to the vet, then normally, they wouldn't have called me. If he was finishing his walk home, normally, it's not uncommon for that to happen at all. So sometimes it takes a couple hours before they reach out to me. So. And then the January of 2023 one, the vet sent me that notice, and the owner actually left the country, like, the same day, apparently. So I didn't even get a chance to speak with him. He was out of the country for, I guess, an extended amount of time. So that was the only information I had from that at that time was from the vet.
So that's the protocol? Anytime, anytime there's an issue with a bite, whether it's to a human or-
Or another animal.
-another animal?
Yes.
That the vet needs to reach out to the dog officer?
Yeah.
Are we doing comments now, or just questions?
Well, should we, should we, do you want to, why don't we, why don't we let, let Finley's owners come up?
Can we talk, can we talk for Enzo, too, or is that after?
Sure, we can. If somebody wants, if somebody has something they want to add, we'll absolutely help. We'll let, we'll let the people that are involved have their, have their time. You, you can come up here now, Bill, if you want.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So I, I will just start by saying that-
I'm sorry, Paula. Who are you and what, your address?
Kelly Sweeney, 12 Farrington, and I'm Finley's mom.
Okay.
I will just say that, that everything that was said is true in terms of Rob and Sam were very apologetic. Sam came right over. They were very amendable. This is not a contentious thing at all, as, as far as I'm concerned. And I can't speak to any other events. But this is the second time that Enzo has come over to our dog, unprovoked, out of his yard, off of a leash, when Finley was in our yard and on a leash. The first time was when we first moved into the neighborhood. We didn't report it. Finley was not bit. She was small enough at that time, where my husband just scooped her up. Sam was very apologetic that time as well. I was like six months pregnant. It, it seemed like a freak thing. We didn't report it. You know, no big deal. Like Rob said, dogs are dogs. Things are gonna happen. However, it seems like Enzo is a little bit volatile in terms of, I understand if dogs have an interaction, they're gonna respond. But for two times, unprovoked, you know, no real reason for him to come after our dog, it's just concerning. And I know that, you know, every situation is different. However, Enzo is the common denominator in all of the situations. And I'm a dog lover. I value the relationship between dog owner and dog. And if this seemed like a one-off thing, I wouldn't, we wouldn't have even gone through with this. I didn't want to, you know, I don't want to put anyone out. I'm not, you know, trying to cause anyone an issue. But I have two small children at home, like Rob mentioned, and I am scared. I haven't walked Finley at night since. If, if I have one of my children with me and something like this happens, I don't know what I'm gonna do. Finley's always on a leash. She's never been outside without a leash. Nobody in our neighborhood would ever be able to say that she has been. And so it is scary. And, you know, I think that if I had a dog that attacked another dog even once, there are so many things that I would do to make sure that it didn't happen in the future. You can get an electric collar. You can get an electric fence. You can fence in the yard. You can use a muzzle. You can make sure your dog is always on a leash. I mean, there's a number of things that can be done. And this has happened quite a few times. And again, I know every situation is different. I'm only speaking to my situations. But it just, it is scary. And the only reason why I really wanted this tonight is just for peace of mind, so that a formal intervention can be determined, and I can know what the protocol will be going forward, and so that I can keep my kids safe and my dog safe. Outside of that, this, that's, that's all I really wanted this for. Thank you.
Do you have anything you want to say? And just, I want to say, and I feel for you, because it is scary, you know. And this is, it's hard whenever, whenever, you know, anybody comes before us for something like this. It's, it's tough. Everybody loves their dog, everybody, you know.
Of course, yeah, of course.
It is scary, and I'm sorry you had to go through that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Bill McGinley. I'm one of the folks who, actually, probably was the- it was the beginning of this little trio of events. Uh, my dog Bo is a very, he's in a, he's a rescue, but he's a very gentle, loving dog. He is one of the favorite dogs in the neighborhood that small children often want to come up and he loves them, they love him, he is not aggressive. Um, you read the letter from Pam Gentile. I did not ask Pam to write that. She, after the event with Kelly, she told me that she wanted to write something. And what I think she tried to describe was that, um, uh, Bo is a gentle, non-aggressive, loving dog. The reason, I think, um, the incident with him happened, I could not see the dog and his owner coming down the street. I was dealing with the daughter of my neighbor who has been ill and was finding out what the status was with my neighbor. And Bo was on a leash. He did not run out of the yard. I was actually another door down from my yard. He was on a leash, standing there as he often does when I engage folks for visiting. All of a sudden, he bolted. He just bolted and pulled my hand right out of the leash and I suddenly heard this huge ruckus of dogs growling and barking. I turned around and I saw my dog with Enzo's jaw wrapped right around my dog's neck like this. It was such a brief moment, there couldn't have been much of a fight. My dog is a playful dog. He loves other dogs too, and he loves to go play with dogs. And he often wants to go play, and I believe that was what his intention was. But Pam Gentile made an interesting observation with the incident that her dog experienced. She has an electric fence. Young Sandy is a very, very obedient dog with that fence there. And never, even when I walk by with Bo, and my Bo and Sandy get along extremely well. We often let Bo loose in the yard and he plays with Sandy. And then when I call him, he comes back, I leash him up and I walk away. But Sandy, without anybody out there, for some reason was provoked to run across the electric fence and engage or almost engage Enzo. I think, and because my dog saw Enzo coming down the street, do dogs communicate in ways that they can be provoked that we don't know? Two incidences of a dog breaking out of their control zone and approaching Enzo, who then, of course, Sandy was lucky, my dog wasn't. I didn't, I know I was, uh, not in control, but you understand the reason. And I didn't bother to call because I knew that was my problem in not being able to restrain him in an instant when this happened. And I paid my $260 vet bill without complaint.
Thank you, Bill. And just so you know, just because it was said to me and you were here, that's why I wanted to let you explain. And in all fairness, I should have, I also should have said that I see you and your girlfriend walking Bo all the time. Bo, Bo's a great dog. So I, I, I should have added that. I don't want anyone to think that, that Bo was, was an issue. I just like, because someone had told, you know, it's a small community, everyone talks about what's going on. So I just figured that way you were here, you could explain what happened.
Thank you.
Flat, flat out.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
May I add my comment as well?
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
State your name and address, please.
Shivi Maruthappan, 21 Farrington Street. Um, I live right of Rob's house. And as she pointed, I have a German Shepherd who's a little over 100 pounds. Might look intimidating, but I spent better part of my lifetime training him. Um, I'm very proud of how well he's trained. Um, and I do know a little thing about dogs because I've been around dogs all my life. Grew up with big dogs, small dogs, and I volunteer at the Mansfield Animal Shelter every Wednesday in the evening. Um, main focus is on large dogs, you know, reactive dogs, et cetera, you know, who usually don't get adopted that easily. Um, so like I said, I've studied dog behavior and I want to just present something very neutral here, right? And absolutely, we all love our dogs, right? So we are here talking for our dogs. Um, a few things there, right? I have nothing against Enzo, right? So the incident with me back in 2023 happened within, I believe, three to four months of me moving in. So obviously I didn't know the dog. And I'm the first person to be looking out for kind of playmates for my dog, right? Oh, great, neighbor with a dog, perfect, right? My dog's going to have a jolly good time. We actually moved from the UK. I brought my dog over from the UK. Obviously, slightly different culture there. There is no dog parks. Again, I personally don't believe in dog parks. It's kind of made up for dog fights. That's pretty much what it is. In the UK, people used to walk their dogs along with them in parks and usually it's small queues, right? It's not about even asking, hey, should I let my dogs off queue? They'll simply nod. It's fine. Big dogs, my 100 pound dogs would be, you know, playing with a pocket pomeranian, which is this size, right, with a tiny tennis ball, right? And they know how to deal with each other. But more than anything, owners were responsible. They knew, right? Dogs were part of the social, you know, fabric there. So it's like treating kids, right? The way you treat kids, how you have a social contact, they knew about dogs. That's how it was in the UK. But coming here, yeah, it's slightly different. A lot of dogs were brought during COVID, not trained well, especially smaller dogs, right? People think that you don't have to train them, right? But I think Bill was pointing out, right? It's, dogs have their own cues. We may not read them, right? It might be the smaller dog that's kind of barking, helping, doing stuff. It may not be the bigger dog. The bigger dog is the one that might be scared, right? I understand all that stuff. For me, the reason, one of the reasons where I didn't kind of follow up with animal control at that point of time is Rob, he came over, apologized profusely, right? I could tell from what he said that, you know, he, you know, he felt really sad about what happened. It was beyond his control. And the one thing that I did tell Rob and his wife, girlfriend at that time is that, please train the dog, right? So one thing that you can do for your dog is, dogs will get out, they'll find a way. Door will be open, they'll slip out, but we can't just say, you know what, I'll have a stronger door and three bolts, that's not going to cut it, right? Have your dog trained and dogs can be dog aggressive, right? It's not about humans, kids. I can't tell just because I bit, bit a dog that the dog would necessarily bite a kid, right? Yes, people will be scared. Right? If I have a kid, I'll be really worried. I have two young girls, eight and 11. First thing that my wife said back then, when the bite happened is, I'm worried about my, you know, kids being in the yard. And I had to tell her from all my dog experience that, you know what, there's something called dog aggression. So it's not going to extend to kids. I didn't know better, but at least I said, that's probably what it is. So my request to Rob at that point of time, please train, right? I even offered, you know what, if you're going to get a trainer, I'm okay to have my dog there, right? Muzzle your dog, because that's ultimately that's what we want, what we want in a neighborhood, right? We want dogs to get along, kids to get along. We don't want it to feel as a threat at any point of time, right? Just because you're walking your dog, yeah, we can say, yeah, leash your dog, et cetera. But these dogs are big. If they decide to pull away, there's nothing stopping them from doing so. And we shouldn't be at the mercy of, hey, leash, I dropped my leash, there's going to be a bite, right? You've seen my dog run alongside and I do have my leash. I've not had a single complaint back to me saying, hey, you know, I feel threatened or thereabout. I would have absolutely had him on my leash, but he does have a e-collar. I've never, ever had to use it, but there is always that recourse, right? He gets away. I can have him in full flight down 200 yards running, taking off. I say down, he'll go down, right? And, you know, Kelly's here and Bill's there.
It's pretty amazing.
Absolutely, right? But then again, I'm very, very, you know, um, aware of my dog's, his behavior, right? I wouldn't introduce him to another dog on leash, purposefully so, because dogs on leash, when you introduce them, they are wired differently because it's fight or flight. I have a leash. So generally, if someone says, hey, two dogs meet, I would rather have them off leash in a secure area rather than meet on leash where, and I'm sure that we've got, you know, officers here, they know, canine officers, that's the worst possible way to hold a dog back, right? You do that because you want to let them go. So a lot of things about dog behavior at work here, but the best thing as owners that we can do is train them, right? At least show that they are being trained. And as Kelly pointed out, right? Have them on leash. If you're worried, have secondary control. If the first bite happens, second bite happens, I wouldn't want to be here, right? I'd rather have the dog muscled and prevent this from happening. And those are the minimum things I would expect, right? Leash, I'd say first training and proof of training, right? Leash muzzle, right? And as neighbors, and I think I'll be the first one to say, you want the dogs to socialize on a muzzle with the trainer, you know, sign me up. So I think that's my side of the story. Like I said, at the end of the day, I don't want anything bad happening to the dog. It's not about taking the dog away, but having that assurance that something is actually being done about the dog. So, thank you.
Thank you. Did you guys want to say something? Somebody wants to say something?
Can I see?
Sure.
Just one at six.
Is there anybody else that needed to talk about this?
I'll take them.
Okay.
Do you care if I go first, Kathy?
No.
Name and address?
Uh, Caroline Mitchell, 111 Summer Street. Um, I have a two-year-old nephew who spends a lot of time with Enzo. And just for anyone thinking that he would be aggressive to children, it's no. My two-year-old nephew absolutely adores this dog, talks about him all the time, loves him, kisses him, is touching his face, loves this dog more than anything. So if anyone is ever concerned about that, there's nothing to be concerned. This dog is so gentle with children, so sweet, so kind. And I think that he's such a sweet boy and my nephew loves him and adores him. And I just wanted to say that he's a very sweet dog with children and he loves people. And that's just something I wanted to say. And I've seen him around other dogs, very playful. And I think that the incident that happened, it happens, dogs, it happens, it's sad and it's scary, but, um, it happens. And I just wanted to put out there that Enzo's a very sweet dog and he loves people and other dogs. So thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
So my name's Kathy Mulcahy and I live in Summerfield too. And I just, I'm familiar with Enzo just being in the neighborhood. And what we're talking about is the neighborhood is right, there's so many, everybody has a dog. And where I live, I'm right on the corner, so I've seen Rob and Sam walk the dog, never off leash, very gentle, come into my yard. And I've been a dog owner for 20 years, you know, and I, and I see how dogs can be playful, but I just, I feel like Enzo's been nothing but gentle. When I live, because because I live on the corner, I hear dogs, you know, in little tussles all day long, like coming by. There's so many dogs in the neighborhood. And like you don't know, you could claim, you know, you're a specialist, but you don't know if they're playing, if this is their way of playing and something happens. Because like I said, I've been a dog owner, I've had neighbors, because like Rob and Sam talked about, the houses in our neighborhood really aren't, you know, our backyard, our neighbor has two labs. And they come in our yard and they, there's really no separation. So, but Enzo's been nothing but, you know, on leash. I see him as a great gentle dog, walking by with friendly owners. And I just wanted to be, you know, speak on his behalf and Sam and Rob's behalf too.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? No, right, right, Case?
I want to.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Just from a board perspective, um, this is a serious issue. Uh, it's a serious issue probably in every community, but I don't think people realize how serious it is. I think this is our fourth here, dog hearing.
My third.
Yeah, and, uh, there, there were two fatalities, dog fatalities in these hearings, you know? So these things happen. And people come up and they're, they're passionate about their dogs, whether the, the owner of the dog or the owner of the dog that was, was, in one case, uh, the, the lady who owned the dog brought her ashes in a box of her dog, you know, that was killed in one of these chance encounters. Now, I have a, a daughter and a son, they both have trained dogs, you know, and I can't agree with you more, the training is really, really critical in terms of, uh, you know, having a safe dog. The other thing I will say is, I walk the dogs all the time. I'm like the designated grandfather walking the dogs, you know, whether it's in Maryland or Massachusetts. I have learned to be hyper, hyper, hyper vigilant because it's all on the owner. I see a dog at the top of the hill, I'm already thinking about my plan, you know, whether it's go somewhere else or, you know, tighten up on the leash, whatever. But I'm already thinking of the plan because at the end of the day, it's all on the owner. The dog's not really responsible. I mean, they are who they are and their genes are what, what they are in their aggression or not, that's who they are. So it's all on the owner. And the owner has to be hyper vigilant. Uh, but we do see the passion here when people come forward. That's why personally I defer a lot to the dog officer because she doesn't have a stake in the game other than the safety of everyone involved. So she's going to be objective in terms of, in my experience, this is what I think is needed. Now, is, does it have to be a permanent solution? Maybe not. Could there be another solution? Maybe that can be talked through. But there needs to be a solution when there's an aggressive dog and things like this happen, and they do happen. And it's very upsetting. It's upsetting to us up here. You know, we had a vote to put a dog down not too long ago. I don't think that ever really happened, but that was the vote. So it's serious and we take it very, very seriously. And we're looking for really good solutions so that we all don't end up here again, you know, talking about these particular dogs because there'll be other dogs, because everyone has dogs nowadays, it seems like. And it's a good thing. I mean, you know, I, I grew up with dogs too. So I just wanted to add that as sort of a little bit of background in terms of my own experience.
Yeah, and you know what? The one thing we did hear is that they took ownership of what Enzo did. You know, I don't feel like, like the people who were involved are up here and like pointing fingers, you're just telling what happened. So, I mean, that's good as a community that we're willing to work. I guess we'll go back to Casey. I mean, you already kind of gave us a heads up. I guess the only question I have, and I know it's sad to think of Enzo having to have a muzzle on, but you're the dog officer. This is, you know, is there any, is there going back? I mean, this gentleman talked about, um, the training. Is there, if they were to get some training and, and it kind of calm the, um, you know, the dog to dog, is there, is there going back? Or once we hit a certain way, just, you just stay that way?
So kind of the way it works with dogs is we look at, um, the pressure that they're going to put behind a bite. So when a dog bites, especially another animal, um, or a person, we want to, a dog with a good bite inhibition isn't going to put punctures in something. A dog with low bite inhibition is going to cause punctures. That's when we have to start looking at the safety of this dog. So a dog may attack another dog and not cause injury. A dog may attack another dog and cause minor injury, severe injury, death. So like, those are kind of what we have to consider here. Um, as far as training goes, the way training works is not to necessarily get rid of these behaviors. It's to modify these behaviors and try to control these behaviors on a different level. So it wouldn't, we can't teach a dog to have better bite inhibition. If a dog is going to have this inhibition, they're going to bite, they're going to cause injury, no amount of training is going to stop that. What the training would do would be to better prepare the dog to not go into that incident or to listen to commands better from the owner, um, or for the owner to be more vigilant of these things happening prior to. So that would be kind of the whole point of training there.
Okay.
Does he stand by your original recommendation?
I do. And I only say this because like the incident with Mr. McGinley's dog, if Enzo had had a muzzle on him, there would have been no bites from either dog. That would have very much prevented that. That is not to say that Enzo was at fault there, but what that shows is that Enzo has that ability to cause damage to another dog and will do it whether he's under the control of the owner or not. So that's the concern there. That would be the, the purpose of the muzzle.
Oh, did you raise your hand?
No, but I'm thinking of saying something.
I wasn't even thinking you were going to say something.
If I may add one more thing, uh, to her, I definitely second.
Okay, you have to come up to the mic.
No, I mean, I think we've, we've heard.
So I completely concur with her on the aspect about training, right? Once a dog bites down, the bite inhibition, very difficult to say, no, bite lightly, right? It's not going to happen. Once it gets into a fight, it's going to bite as hard as it usually does. But in terms of the ability of the owner to recall, right, to stop the dog. So in this case, like, what I know, I didn't see it firsthand, but I was told that the dog ran over to Finley, right? Someone with a recall, a dog with a recall, you could have stopped it, right? Stop, come, would have done it, right? The whole thing would not have panned out as it did. So, and the other one is the dog's ability to just stay put, right? Stay close to the owner, right? You can definitely train the dog to do that, right? My, my dog is a good example there, right? He wouldn't leave 10 or 15 yards, you know, from where I am, right? He just hovers around and that's pretty much it. So these, these are kind of guardrails and, you know, safety nets for the neighbors. If they understand the dog's not going to take off, right? It's not at the mercy of a leash. That's where the training comes in, right? Again, my, my preference here would be not just the muzzle, right? Muzzle is a secondary mechanism, but do have the training. And when I say training, it's also the exercise side of it, right? Because a lot of these dogs which bite on first contact, which is kind of what happened with my dog too, right? When I was training my dog in my front yard, he was right in a front, you know, sit position. He was looking at me right in the eyes when I was training him. That's when Rob's dog came, ran over. Neither of us did see that. It's not one of those things, the dogs were going, meeting each other. I didn't see the dog coming. My dog did not see the other dog coming. It was too late. Once the dog was here, I thought, okay, they are here. The best thing that could happen is both dogs being off leash. The best thing that could happen is both dogs being off-leash, right? So one's not more reactive than the others. But it was so brief and it happened very quickly. And my dog is a much bigger dog, it's over 100 pounds. Their dog did not have a bite, right? It just fended, it's because it doesn't have, you know, my dog has bite inhibition, it doesn't have a bite in it. So lucky that it didn't happen that there was a bite on the other end. Uh, but long story short, that wouldn't have happened if the dog, number one, you know, knew to stay put, not to run away. Second thing is lot of energy, right? When it comes to a bite on first contact, it means that the dog has a lot of pent-up energy, not receiving enough exercise, right? You know, a lazy dog, you know, a tired dog is a good dog, that's what they say, right? You, you basically walk your dog two miles, three miles a day, it's tired. It's not going to look, look for a bite or a fight. But if that doesn't happen, it's definitely going to lead to unnecessary behavior. So that's where the training comes in, it's part training, part exercise, and then of course, the muzzle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just Casey, what I have, if I could through the chair. I guess I, I have a little bit of an issue with the fact that two of the incidents, um, you know, Enzo was on leash. And, and, and the other dog, really, in, in the whole scheme of thing, was the aggressor. Um, and I, I can't necessarily agree with Rob that a person walking down the street with a dog on a leash, somehow they're the aggressor, uh, when two other dogs come out and sort of they're the aggressor. Um, and any dogs are going to protect their owner or, or protect themselves. So that's what I'm right now having a real hard.
No, I, I agree.
Issue with.
My.
And not to say that they were wrong, you know, dog getting out of the house with you guys is, is bad. But two of those incidents.
No, I, I definitely agree with you there on that. Um, my, my whole point with this is that, um, there were two incidences off-leash, where the dog went into another yard and attacked a dog, causing injury. On top of the fact that when another dog approached the dog while under the control of the owner, the dog still had the propensity to cause damage to another dog. So while, while that wasn't necessarily Enzo's fault, that's a good example just to look at, to see the ability that the dog has to cause injury to another dog, even when under the control of the owner. And obviously the incidences when he's not under the control of the owner, the injuries that he can cause. So those, when we kind of look at it all collectively, that's, that's kind of why, like I want to point out that there were other incidences, even though they weren't necessarily Enzo's fault. He was there, he did cause injury, um, and these dogs, well, one of, one of them ended up having to go see a vet for that, so.
I don't, I don't want to be too long-winded whatsoever, because I, I just want to object to one thing that you said. Um, because she said, oh, if Enzo was muzzled, there would never have been a bite on the time that my dog was attacked. Our dog had multiple bites on them and even in the case with Finley, had a bite back on him. So he did get bit both times. I just didn't call the vet or call. The first one where our dog was walking and came to the street, it was a bunch of cuts that we had some, you know, medicine that we could give our dog and we just treated it there. Uh, and the second one with Finley, like I said, it was our fault, our dog's fault. Uh, but he did receive a bite. So again, even if he was leashed, and that's why I, I said my thing in the first, even if he was leashed or walking and a dog, like I said, two of the incidents when the dogs came up to us, that means my dog would have been bit. I, I, I'm not saying, oh, your dog should be bit just because my dog's bit, but he would have had no way to defend himself. And I know he said, oh, he grabbed him with his throat, but what he didn't see, because his back was turned, is he ripped my dog's, Enzo's ear. And he's got a massive laceration that we took care of. Uh, I should, I guess I should have brought it to the vet and gone from there. I just didn't, just because we had the ability to take care of it. We've had dogs, my parents have had dogs, her parents have had dogs. We took care of it because that's what we just did. And, and the second time, well, obviously, our dog bit Finley and shouldn't have and we're very sorry about it, but he received a big puncture wound. So when people say, oh, well, dogs have the aggression or whatever, that's two other dogs that one was playful and one was attacked, that apparently they have the aggression bite, too, because they bit my dog back. Or in the case of when I was walking my dog, the other one that bit my dog first. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Rob, I'll say one thing, I, I have a pit bull. And my pit bull is probably the biggest baby you've ever met in your life. But he'll scare the hell out of you, come to the door.
Right.
The difference is, and we're, we're Casey's saying, and I truly get it, even with my very young nine-year-old, uh, grandchild, the pit bull basically does not have the aggression on biting. Doesn't with other dogs. I, we used to bring him to a park and the other dogs used to bite him, wouldn't bite back. What Casey's saying, which I do agree with, is a dog who has bitten and who knows that that's how their defense is, will more than likely do it again. And, and I've seen it, I've had German Shepherds, I've had multiple types of dogs in my life. So, I think the solution here to keep your dog safe, keep your neighborhood safe and keep yourself out of, out of issues, first of all, everybody thinks of a muzzle like it's the, the worst thing in the world and it's, it hurts the animal. It doesn't. Um, you see many people walk their dogs with muzzles just on a general sense, um, for safety reasons. So, again, I don't, I don't think that your dog is the, the cause of all the root of, of issues, but your dog in another situation similar where you're walking it and another person walks by, if you get close to each other, it, it could happen again. And that's all we're trying to prevent here. So, um, I don't, again, I don't see the, obviously the leash, everybody's supposed to be on a leash, so that's, you know, to me, not a, a big deal. And, uh, you know, obviously being able to keep them in your yard, I think it's great that you're going to fin- finish fencing in your yard, so that you basically have that ability to let the dog just run and exercise. But I think for your dog's safety and for your own, you know, ability to keep the dog, I think, uh, you know, what Casey is suggesting is, is not, you're going to find, it's not that detrimental to the dog. It's not really going to be a, a problem and hopefully it resolves your issues and, and the dog lives forever, so.
We actually have another dog in the neighborhood that, I think I was on vacation. Doc, and I think Dennis, you might have been here, is another dog that recently pulled a little dog out of the owner's arms, do you remember that?
No.
And, um, I think, you know what I'm, who know I'm talking about? Um, and so I think when the dog's walking in the neighborhood, he has to be muzzled.
He's in your own yard, he's fine, but.
Casey. Um, everyone's talking about the dogs on the leash. What do you think of choke chains as a disal- safety factor?
So, um, what we are looking at is we have to adhere to what the state laws are for what recommendations we can make. Um, and I think that for dangerous dogs, we have to adhere to this. If you choose to do nuisance and you want to add other stipulations to it, that's totally up to you guys. But for a choke chain to be productive and useful, it has to be done with a trainer and that has to be used appropriately. And that doesn't necessarily prevent things, that could escalate things, um, because now the dog is not just feeling like it's having to fend itself from another dog, but it's also got a collar on it that's causing pain at the same time. So, I mean, it could potentially escalate, that comes with a lot of extra strings to it.
Yeah, I have experience, but it's with trained dogs, so it's different.
Yeah.
I have a question, Steph.
Yeah, Dennis.
Casey, you gave us the options for a dog that's being determined to be a dangerous dog. Um, and then you mentioned, what is the category that's below a dangerous dog?
A nuisance dog.
What is the criteria for their care?
So with a nuisance dog, we can kind of come up with whatever stipulations put in place. Um, there's lots of different options. We could say that they have to do training, we could say that they have to wear the muzzle, we could say that they have to do all of that. Um, with the dangerous dog, we have to adhere to the list that the state puts forth for what the options are. Um, and it kind of defines it out a little bit better for like the muzzling, the leashing and the confinement, um, so that it's not just muzzle your dog and keep your dog in your yard. It's, it's spelled out a lot differently and a lot more in-depth. Um, and if something were to happen, then the consequences would be a little bit more severe with a dangerous dog versus a nuisance dog.
I, I, you know something, shame on me, I thought if we, I thought if we went dangerous, the option was, if you go dangerous, the option is to euthanize?
No, no, absolutely not. There's an entire list that the state, um, has listed out. Euthanasia is one of them, it's not something I'm recommending for this situation at all.
Yeah, yeah, I, I knew that, but for some reason I thought dangerous.
There's a whole, and so the, the three recommendations that I sent to you were the exact recommendations from this, from the options there. The other options are like permanent identification options, spaying and neutering, um, and euthanasia, which I believe the dog's already neutered and so that wouldn't even be a, a consideration. Euthanasia's not a consideration, I don't think, so.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Unlike you, I'm just struggling with a, but, okay. You want to, you want to make a motion?
Close the hearing.
Got a motion.
Oh, yeah, yeah, close the hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So do we want Deb to stop the motion with Casey's recommendations?
I make a motion to determine Enzo a dangerous dog?
With the correct. I think we should put in the criteria, though, right?
The criteria to be, the dog is to be confined in insurance policy of $100,000 for any other incidences that may happen. He's to be leashed and muzzled at all times and went off his own property.
Yeah.
Leashed and muzzled at all times, went off property.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, I guess one last thing I want to add, though, is, Rob, what you said didn't, obviously Doc brought it up, I brought it up, did not go on deaf ears, so you know that. Um, you know, when we sit up here, Casey is the expert and so, you know, usually we have to go with her. But I guess I would just want to remind everybody involved that there were a couple of incidents where other dogs went after Enzo. So, please, everybody, keep your dogs on leash, keep them, because we don't want anybody to have to, we don't want to have to see Rob and Sam in here with a complaint because somebody has attacked. You know, and I hate to use the word attack, like, I know it's a fine line, but like, you know, so, there, there was, you know, other circumstances to this decision, so.
I just have a question about wording. You just said leashed.
Come up.
Oh.
Can't hear you there.
I'm sorry.
Name is Susan Ford, I'm William McGinley's partner. I just have a question about the wording when you said be muzzled and leashed when on property.
Off property.
Off property. Off property. But it's in, if they're in the front yard and they're not muzzled or leashed, then what's to stop the same thing from occurring that just occurred with Finley?
The fence is going, the yard is going to be fenced.
The front yard is going to be fenced?
No, not the front, but they, in other words, they still have to have the dog under control on their own property.
Okay, so that doesn't stop another occurrence from happening? If they're not, if they're not, if they're on their own property but not muzzled or leashed, then the same thing could occur.
They're going to be leashed if they're outside the front where there is no control.
Okay, you're assuming that, but usually it's not stated.
Tracy, Casey.
I can read it exactly how it's written.
Fine.
Which will cover all of it.
The exact wording is that the dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog, provided however that confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed in-lock pen or dog run area upon the premises of the owner or keeper. It covers all of that, then.
Thank you, Jason. Okay.
Okay, all right. We closed the public hearing, we voted. Okay, these, these ones are never easy, are they?
Nope.
You know, and we wish everybody good luck and no other incidents. Okay. Okay, so we have, um, yeah, we're opening up another public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Select Board acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 138 will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, beginning at 7:20 in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, to, to determine pursuant to Section 5 of Article 20 of the town's general bylaws, whether to revoke or suspend TNO Walker, Inc., slash Rally Point Inn and Pubs, in holder, all alcoholic beverages licensed due to non-payment of taxes, such premise being located at 9 Mechanic Street, Foxborough, Mass. Manager of record, Tina Walker.
Maybe a little help getting up there? Go this way?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, we'll move you to the. Stay right there. 180.
Good evening. Right there.
Paige, should we have a representation from the collector's office or you?
Um, Katie has an update.
Battle hand handle, okay.
Do you want to give us that?
Um, sure, so we had a, um, payment come in last week, so I did connect with Paula, our treasurer collector. And right now, for the outstanding balance, plus the payment that was made, brings us down to $6,354.89. Um, and it was originally, um, right around $12,000. That was due December 31st of 2024.
Okay. All right, what's your name, sir?
My name is Omari Walker.
Oh, Omari, I know the name, Mansfield star, B.C. star, right? That, that Omari Walker?
A little bit, yeah.
Excellent.
It's that Omari Walker.
Yeah, you had a, a Foxborough High School football coach here. I think he kicked the crop out of us a couple of times back in the day. So, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
So, are you owner of?
I'm the O in TNO.
Okay.
My wife and I own the Rally Point. My wife is sorry and I'm sorry she couldn't be here.
Okay, so, we know that you, you, we know you fell behind and you've, you've made a, a good payment. Uh, I think the only thing we talked about was taxes were due yesterday, correct?
Yes, they were due Mon- yeah, Monday.
Okay, so right now, there's a balance of the $6,000 and change?
Yeah.
Yes, it's correct.
All right, so is there, do you have a plan, Omari, or?
Yes, we've just, um, last six months have been a, a pretty tough time at the, at the property, um, where, um, sales have been down. And we did have to go through a management change where, um, staffing, um, wasn't behaving as we hoped they had. And, um, I've actually stepped in over the last month to, to really, um, change some practices and policies. And we've really had an uptick in, um, in the way we, in the way we, um, turn a profit. So we, we, we think we can, um, pay these taxes, um, definitely within the month, maybe even within a couple of weeks. We just need a little more time.
Okay, do we have, uh, did, what did, did Paula give a recommendation on a timeline at all, or?
She did not, she wanted to leave that up to.
Okay.
We did announce for that.
So basically, we just want to, you know, we heard that Omari is, thinks in roughly a month he could pay. And that's really what the, the board is going to decide tonight, is just, um, make a motion to, to give the Rally Point a month to, to get caught up? Would that be the action?
It's entirely up to the board. We just, so let's just to give some background, as you know, you know, all the licenses get renewed on December 31st. Um, this is the one outstanding license. Um, licenses aren't able to be granted if, um, permit fees or, or, you know, taxes aren't paid. So, um, given what we just went through with Olive and Mint, we didn't want to let it get so far out of hand. But eh, the authority on this absolutely rests with your board. We just wanted to bring this to your attention, it's your decision. And Jay could probably opine further on kind of what your discretion is, but, um, I, I think it is truly rest with the Select Board.
Okay.
Chief, can I ask one question, if you don't mind?
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you have any issues at all with the operation of what's going on, um, at the Rally Point?
Uh, in regards to the, what the owner just cited internally?
Not, not their financial issues, but just the operation, there's no?
No, no, it's not a, uh, a place of business that we would consider a nuisance by any means. There, there's oversight, there's calls for service, but nothing that's spiking or something that we would be concerned about.
It's your typical, we're, we're the place that's, that serves alcohol.
Yeah, and it's also, um, Yeah, and it's also, um, a lot of people reside there on weekly and monthly and all different variety of different leases.
Okay, alright, just wanted to make sure there was another.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody have, it's gonna go to Jay, anybody have a question?
Are you currently operating with a license now?
Yes.
So I guess if the board did not, if the board, I guess I should ask Jay. If the board did not want to extend some time for payment of taxes, then we could also make a decision to pull the license. Correct, is that?
Right, so you, you have a bit of discretion here, there's a number of actions you can take. You can revoke, you can suspend, you can do that, all of those things. I think suspension, if there's a good faith effort to generate some revenue, that's probably working against that. You can also enter into a payment plan of sorts that gets a little bit more nuanced. I wouldn't recommend resolving it and say, we'll give you more time. If you think they need a little bit more time, what I might recommend is that you continue this hearing. It is a public hearing, and you continue it for a month, and then bring them back, see where we are. And if there's been meaningful progress, you know, then we can decide what kind of remedy is still needed there, what kind of payment plan, or whether or not we continue it for another month or two weeks, or whatever it may be. That would be my recommendation. Obviously, you have a bit of discretion to do a number of different things here.
Yeah, I mean, you know, since I've been on the board, I mean, the last thing we would like to see is businesses go under. We gave Olive and Mint a lot of, a lot of leeway, but I will agree with Paige. We almost gave them, you know, and it was COVID, they were shut down. So, we probably gave them too much leeway, but, but they did, they ended up correcting it. So, um, I mean, I guess what I would be thinking is, payment plan sounds, sounds good, maybe?
No, you just said you can't do a payment plan, all we can do is continue the hearing for 30 days.
Omari already said, two to three weeks, he's gonna catch up anyway.
I thought you said, I thought you said we could start on a payment plan. So we would continue it, and then that would give Omari enough time to probably meet with Paula? Paula would, Paula would?
No, strictly, he's got a month to make payments. So, he can, he can make a payment every week if he wants for the next month, but it'd be paid up in a month. Or do whatever he can in that timeframe, in a month, we'll make another decision based on
Okay.
where he stands.
When you said payment plan, I thought it was just, you know, keep him, you know, by May 1st, when taxes would be due again, that he would need to be caught up. So we would discuss that at the next meeting, not the next meeting, 30 days. Okay. Alright, everyone? Everyone good, good with that?
Yeah, make a motion to.
Yeah.
Wouldn't necessarily be 30 days, it'd be 28.
Yeah, we have to do a date and time certain.
To do a date.
So, March 4th would be two meetings, and we'd have to do it at, at like 7:05 PM, or whatever time we choose.
Yeah. Alright.
Okay. Make a motion to continue this hearing until March 4th, at which time a decision will be made based on payment.
Second.
Or not.
At 7:05 PM.
7:05 PM.
Okay.
Second.
And so, just to make sure that, that we understand, and Omari understands, so we would hope that maybe in that 28 days, you would be current.
We'll be current.
Alright, perfect. Did you second, did you second? Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We gotta close the hearing, no?
No, because you continued it.
We continue.
Oh, we continue, okay.
Alright, great.
Right.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Do you need assistance?
Do you need some help?
Maybe.
My clerk is gonna help you.
Okay, Paige, let you start talking about the strategic plan.
You could have walked here like I did, alone. Say that again, stop. We're being cruel.
Sorry, what'd you say?
I said.
She was kicking me off.
Oh, it's not you, there we go.
I figured, I said, we can catch you.
Oh, no, we're all just watching. So in your pack, in your board, community, not board docs, you have a handout. I'm not gonna read it. We've already kind of had a long night. Katie and I were thinking this was gonna be a shorter night. We did, we did poorly, we apologize on that. But we had mentioned strategic planning previously, and, and we talked about the possibility of having a strategic plan committee and whatnot. So I wanted to keep that conversation moving. I did a little more research about strategic planning and kind of the steps that I think the board will wanna make, take. First is to define the purpose and the scope, and then to begin engaging stakeholders, developing a leadership and project team, identifying resources, a timeline, and then kicking into the project itself. So we, we're still just talking about the very early stages, so I, I kind of wanted to bring it up to this board to discuss next steps. Do you want to put out a call for a committee? Do you have any thoughts on a makeup of a committee? You know, how do we engage with not our usual suspects? You know, we love our usuals, but how do we reach out to those corners of the town where we don't usually hear from folks? And just kind of starting that dialogue.
Do we plan, I think we talked about this before, but we plan to see if there's a consultant that we can tap into on this, because I know when we did it on the school side a couple times over the last 12 years, the consultant really was key in making this thing move very quickly, because obviously they've done it so many times for different communities, and they're, they know what the little pitfalls are and stuff, so is the plan to basically put the group together and then hire, try to hire a consultant that basically would work with that committee to move forward, is that what you're?
Well, yeah, I'm not that tight on the time, I mean, whether we get a committee seated that soon. I'll know more about the, um, the funding, because I, I put it on the CIP this year, but as you know, as we discussed, the CIP's kind of tapped out this year, so we'll see if it makes it through. If it doesn't make it through, it would either pause it or we'd have to go to Plan B. If it does make it through, then July 1, we could have a consultant, you know, start the process for bringing a consultant on it. And that's, I think, up to the board of how you see best. You know, I wanted to keep the subject moving, but if we feel that it's better to wait on a committee and get some insight from a consultant, or, you know, it.
I, I think, well, I, my opinion is getting the committee together and having it be the founding thing, so that everybody understands what you're trying to do, and then, because you're gonna probably have to interview some consultants.
They could be involved, the committee could be.
The one type thing that walks in the door, so they would be involved with that too, and then move into it, so. That'd be my suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, I think I mentioned, I've done a number of these over the years, more than I can count, probably. And I think what Bill is describing is really the best way of going. You want the committee, you want the committee engaged. You want them to be part of the process of the RFP, and then you want them to help interviewing, you know, whatever resources are out there that could help the committee, you know, get this done.
Great.
And as far as how do we find, you know, different people, unfortunately, that's the age old question. Nobody seems to be able to answer. But I think maybe if we, if we start to post it on the town website and stuff like that, the committee's gonna be formed, and then there are people that are interested in it. And then we are looking for people that have different opinions across the town, we don't wanna get, you know, just one group of people that are looking to drive this thing. It'd be really good to have some people from the business side, it'd be good to have people from, you know, the town side in general, from, you know, whatever different contingencies there are.
Do you have, in your experience, do you have a sweet spot for the number of committee members? I mean, sometimes a committee can get too big. You know, I, I was thinking, I don't know, I was thinking like seven-ish?
I was gonna say, seven to nine would be, would be kind of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think once you start getting over 10, you know, nine or 10, above 10, it's getting unwieldy, so.
And it's gotta be an odd number.
Yeah.
Right, chief?
Yes, I don't want to interrupt this.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so what I'll do is I'll have, um, I don't think we'll go public with this just yet, we have a little time. Come up with maybe a suggested language on how we sell it, you know, put the ad out, and then maybe the makeup, because, you know, you might wanna have a certain number from town.
Typically, at least in my experience, I don't know Dennis and yours, but typically, like, in a committee like this one, obviously it would be yourself, it would be probably a board member. It would probably be somebody from the finance side of the town, you know, as the three kind of inter, you know, inter groupings, and then six that basically, or maybe it's less, if you're gonna go four, that are the resident base, like the business base and stuff like that, so. Because obviously, any strategic plan you're gonna do, you need the input from finance and yourself and, and, you know, the board as to what, how is this gonna actually work?
Yeah.
Was it Chief Keller here that went through this whole process in the fire, fire department?
Um, Chief Grace, I mean, Chief Keller did accreditation. I don't know if that was the same thing, but I know Chief Keller, Chief Grace just went through his strategic plan last year.
Yeah, okay. So he'd be a good resource.
Be a good resource, yeah. Okay, so I think I have a, a good start, I'll bring something forward to the next meeting, kind of with the, and get ready to go, you know, daylight that solicitation of interest. And just, I'm sure people will be knocking down the door to serve on the strategic planning committee.
Okay.
Want me to keep going?
Yep.
Right back with you, Paige.
Okay, um, Walnut, Walnut Knoll had an informational session on the 29th, over 150 people jammed into that community, the senior center over there, it was a fabulous turnout. It was recorded, so if anybody is interested in learning more about how to become a resident of Walnut Knoll, which is the affordable housing project being built on the corner of 140 and Walnut Street, that has been recorded, it's playing on demand. If you go to, you Google Foxborough Cable Access YouTube, you'll come up with their channel, and you'll see that. It's also probably available on their website, but I always just go to the YouTube route.
Paige, can I ask one question on that?
Sure.
I didn't attend, my wife did, but one of the things that was brought up that kind of concerned me was that the requirement for parking there was only one car per unit?
Yeah.
How does anybody anticipate that that's actually gonna work? If you're 55 or older, you're potentially both working still.
Yep. They have a lot of, uh, actual data from these apartments, and they, they have enough parking, according to them. So, they feel confident that, you know, not every single person lives there, has a car, and not every household that, you know, has two people able to, has two cars, so they really, they don't, haven't found it to be a problem.
Okay, interesting.
We did file the pedestrian bridge mobility hub application, so it was filed on January 28th. We held a training for our department heads last week for de-escalation. That was really helpful, because as you know, things get heated now. In fact, I was thinking of some of the board meetings we had, where I was like, we probably should bring in the consultant to do our exercise here, because you know, when, I mean, we had a planning board meeting, and you have certain meetings, when people are, you know, upset, it's always good to have practice of how to deal with it, and, you know, we in the town side, we do. A lot of times when people come to the town hall, they are upset. And so it's, you know, Gene Hurdle's favorite thing is wiggling your big toe and, and just taking it down. So it was really a very helpful training, we got a lot of positive feedback on it. So it was probably the best one that I've heard about in a long time. Tomorrow's probably not as exciting, sexual harassment, but it is something that is required to do, so we are doing our required training on that. The annual town meeting warrant is still open. I believe we're over 30 articles at this point.
We're, we were 30.
We just lost one down to 29, we're down to 29 as of this meeting. Adcom, we had our first one last Wednesday night, next one tomorrow night. And the master plan, Catherine's gonna start outreach on that, they're, the consultant's on board, and they're starting to plan community outreach, so if anybody has any ideas of, or venues where the consultants could go for master plan outreach and getting input, you know, let Catherine know, or let me know, because we really are, again, outreach and sort of community input is the key to all these plans, and we really wanna leverage off the master plan into strategic plan, even though normally you'd probably do it the other way, but we wanna build off that, we really wanna give the residents a sense that they had a say in this master plan, so we wanna get the word out. I mentioned that Paige Appolito's leaving, her last day is Thursday, and our new HR director, Michael Mullin, starts on Monday, so the good thing is we only have a four-day gap. He comes highly, we were at MMA, the MMA conference, and I was so thrilled, because every person that knew Michael came up to me and was like, and it was all a variety of different, it wasn't like one group, and they were like, you got a good one, so I feel real good about that hire. I have been in touch with Southeastern Mass Regional Vocational School to start, you know, looking into that. I haven't really found other towns that are too worried about it. In fact, I kind of got my wrist slapped saying that they've kept on track, and they're down at 2.5% and so, um, I'll dig in, I'm gonna meet with Southeastern Regional as well, but I did reach out to my peers. And I did also get an email as a follow-up to our last meeting, the concern about, that was mentioned about Costco opening. There was a concern emailed to me about Beach Street, and I just want to acknowledge that, and we'll, you know, we'll keep our eyes on it, the police chief's aware of it, DPW director's aware. We'll kind of see, usually in the first couple of weeks, it can be hard, and you might see traffic. Hopefully, as things settle down, Beach Street won't experience a tremendous amount of traffic, but it is something we'll keep an eye on. And, I mean, it's always hard, as you know, you can't limit trucks typically, you can't limit cars, but we can, there are certain things we can do to keep an eye on that, and we will. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Two questions.
Go right ahead.
Through the chair.
Go right ahead.
You know, good segue, maybe into the selectman part two. You know, we, we got two emails today, I think. Both, um, one, both from the state, one about Governor Healy wanting to put legislation together, do you guys remember that? Trying to get revenue to de-governmentize, you know, to make government a little bit less.
The government empowerment, the municipal empowerment?
Well, try to rein in government a little bit, am I reading that wrong?
No, I think.
So I'm curious if you heard about that, and the other one was, um, raising hotel and meals tax?
Oh, that's part of the Municipal Empowerment Act. So the more Healy has filed legislation, she did so last year as well, and it would allow an increase in meals and hotels tax, and a few other financial changes.
Anything we wanna look into?
Um, you could look into it, I just didn't know, based on the history here, you know, I didn't know if the town would wanna look at increasing meals or hotel tax. I know it was hard to get in the first place, so I wasn't sure. Yeah, I wasn't sure, and then I'll have to look in again to see, I looked at it last year. But certainly something you could look at, but.
It has to pass legislation for.
Well, and that's, I think, the problem, I think they're looking for, it didn't move last year. So they're looking for some local folks to help out.
Okay. I was just wondering, right after MMA, if that came up at all.
I mean, we're more worried about our, yeah, we're more worried about our hybrid public hearings being continued, you know, being able to meet remotely than, I mean, we're interested in some of the other stuff too, but we're more urgently worried about that in a month. So, but, yeah, I mean, there's some opportunities there, but again, it's, I, I look at that stuff cautiously, because it's, it's really the residents that paying more money. So I know that that's not necessarily the answer everybody's looking for, so it certainly can be looked at. But are we gonna be in the front lines pushing for it? Probably not.
Okay, just curious.
I got a email from Susan from the Chronicle asking if I had a comment, and I very nicely said, duh. I said, I do not know enough about it to make a comment, I said, so, I'm gonna defer. The only thing I will say about the meals tax is, I mean, I, I'm not saying we should go that route, but once we did get people on board in town to have that extra three quarters, that's paying high roll pip, right? So, I think the one thing everyone thinks of, okay, well, first of all, how many residents are staying at the hotels? Okay, for, you know. Second of all, I think the big thing there is remembering that also that meals tax is off stadium events. So it's not really just, you know, if you go to Conrad's, and you, you know, I remember the big thing was, you know, if you weren't gonna spend seven, if you were spending $100, it was an extra $7. And that, but, you know, I'm not saying we go that route, but I think there are, are some instances for us with having a stadium, you know, you're talking about the beer, concessions, hotels up there. But, like I said, I'm not pushing for it either, but it might be something to talk about down the road. I'm gonna shut up, because I sound awful.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, and, uh, Yeah, and the only, the only thing I want to add under old business, Katie sent me an email, Deb brought it up after the last meeting, when we were talking about the extra money we need for the community center, and, and I know Katie asked back, I could've sworn at that tour, he told us that there was a donation of a couple hundred thousand dollars towards an elevator.
No, no, there was one from a woman for the kitchen area, yeah.
I thought, I thought he said that there was.
There was in the old one, they collected money for an elevator in the old one.
Right.
Oh, right, and I thought he still had the money too.
I thought it was gonna get transferred to this.
Yeah, I agree with Steph, I.
And I heard it from someone else, too.
I think it's in the Friends of Seniors account, and they have total control.
Oh.
Yes, absolutely.
Agreed, but.
And I think that it was their funds, that they were saying that they would use it that way.
For some reason, I remembered 45 or 50.
I thought it was a much larger number, but that was a year ago. Okay, so Katie did say she touched base with him, I know that was something he brought, listen.
He brought it to us.
Yeah, that, that building was a steal, no matter what, so compared to what we would've invested on a new building, so, so all's, all's good, but I did remember him mentioning a donation, okay, anybody else for selectman's update?
Well, there is an update on Norwood Hospital, I've been plugged into the Tony Mazuko calls and communications, and the governor is, is engaged now to really try to get that off to ground and up and running, and she'll be working with Tony to put together a work group to really start to look at what it's gonna take to get a full, her words, a full-service hospital back up and running to serve that part of the state where there's a, I think as we all know, there's just a gaping hole in the state in terms of the services provided for this area since Norwood Hospital went down, so somehow it finally got her attention, you know, she, you know, moved up on her priority list, but that's the update.
That is, just because, you know, obviously it might've been on your radar, who took over St. Elizabeth's from Stewart, do you know by any chance?
That was Boston Medical Center.
Oh, they took over, good CM too, okay.
Right.
Awesome, anybody else? All right, I guess we can go to action items.
Motion to appoint Adam Mazzola as a constable with a term to end, 13127.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve a memorial bench honoring Vin and Helen Igoe in the 50th wedding anniversary, which was in 2005.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Accepted, or motion to accept a donation from Christine Anne Freeman for a memorial bench for Vin and Helen Igoe in the amount of $1,200.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept a donation from Evie Mom in the amount of $25,000 to the Community Center Kitchen.
Oh, that's great.
So that's the second half, second.
Yeah, thank you, what a, what a generous donation.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve nine one-day beer and wine license applications for Normity Farms Food Truck Festival slash Brew Fest 2025 season, April 12th and 26th, May 17th and 31st, June 21st, July 23rd, 6:00 to 9:30 PM, September 13th and 27th, and October 4th at 72 West Street.
Sure.
Can we get a second first?
Second.
Good evening, my name is Aaron Wendling, and I live at 78 West Street, so I live like right around the corner from them. I'll lead with a question, and that's, do you have the records on how many of these one-day beer license events have happened? Just in our, our family's experience in living at the property, it seems that the number has gone up, and I read briefly over that application, and it said that they had two to three musicians, and I know that our family is, at least one, on one occasion, complained about the noise, so I didn't necessarily think that was the most honest description about how many musicians are gonna be playing there, so I guess my ultimate question is, is the number of events increasing, because I don't have any data on that, and then is there gonna be any limit to the number of events, because it just, because we live so close to there, and every, every year they have it, like, we don't, we love that they're in our community, but some of these just events are really loud and we can hear them, and then especially with the, the drinking, it presents a public safety risk at some points, so, because it's a road that's very narrow.
Exactly, the only thing I could say, I know this, this application is new to Bill and Deb, but this, you know, why we don't have them in front of us is because, you know, they kinda, you know, they know what they're doing, now, I don't know the answer about the number.
The last two years, last two summers, they've had nine events, and so it's remaining consistent with 2025.
Was there any data that you had before that?
I can look back and grab your email, I do believe they started this the year of COVID.
Okay.
And I would guess that if, have you guys, so you said you've actually called the police, made a complaint, or?
I actually, I can't speak to the specifics of that, that was something my parents did, because the, we've had our property in the family since 93 on, on West Street, so I don't know the nature of the complaint, whether we called Normity Farms or whether we called the town, I apologize, I don't have the specifics on that.
No, no worries.
Do they, do they need an application for the music side of things? Because this is just for the liquor license.
They don't, because they have an annual entertainment license already for the property, but I have, you know, just worked with Christine Daniels, who manages the property over there, she's my main contact, I'm sure if I gave her, if I could get her personal phone number and just exchange it with yours, and she'd be able to work with you guys if that's preferable.
Yeah, no, and you know, this is the first, I've heard a complaint, I mean, yeah, I mean, they've come before us, the chiefs have, we haven't had any issues, but, but I, I understand your, your point for sure.
But if there is an issue, please let us know.
Of course.
Yeah, so we can start documenting it.
How late does it go at night?
They're only asking for 6:00 to 9:30 for the alcohol side of things, so, but I don't know how long the band's playing.
Right, I'm only given that same information, so I would assume 9:30.
Yeah, in my recollection, it hasn't been too late, it's probably around then, that's when the cutoff is usually, but it is just something that we've noticed, I guess since COVID, that kinda seems, because I don't have any data on this, it's just going based on our observations living on that street, so.
Thank you, let us know.
Yeah, for sure. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve select board meeting minutes from January 21st, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion?
Stephanie, may I note something? There was a mistake that I did make, I, on the, excuse me, on 4.01, I should have had the word democratic instead of the word Democrat, so with your permission, I could not amend the agenda, but amend the motion to read Democratic, please.
Absolutely. All right, any other discussion?
Although, in fact, I could've read it 10 times and not picked it up.
I don't catch that.
It was a resident that did point that out, but I wanted to just apologize.
All those in favor?
Oh, yes.
Aye.
Second. Well, you got a second, and I was amended.
Motion to adjourn?
No. Second.
I'll second that one.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Good night, everybody, thank you for watching.